April 27th, 2021. Our invocation today will be given by Pastor John Stouffer with First United Methodist Church. Pastor, if you'd please like to come forward. Everyone, if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Shall we pray together? God, we're thankful. We're thankful for you and for your love. We're thankful for one another and for our great city. And we pray that in the midst of this season, your light would shine upon our path, that we might live in the midst of your will. Grant us your grace that as we conduct all of our business here and everywhere else, our thoughts and our words and our actions might bring glory to your name. Give us your grace that we might tend to those in need, that we might protect the defenseless, and lead lives that bring glory to your name, and build a great city. We pray this through Christ our Lord and all God's people said. Amen.
Amen. Please join in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ames here.
Mayor Protim Philshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Gibbs.
Present.
Councilmember Pete.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel, absent. Councilmember Muton.
Present.
Thank you. Thank you. So today we have several, actually, proclamations and a presentation. I would ask if you are here for that purpose, if you will stay until we finish those, as not to disrupt the next group. I'd appreciate it. And first, we, council, you have something in front of you. And I'm going to ask our veterinarian, Dr. Kelly Kayes, for Beaumont Animal Care. And I believe Matt is here with you, Dr. Kayes. There's Matt. Y'all want to come forward. Beaumont Animal Care has done some remarkable things over the last few years. And I think Dr. Kayes found some background from way back and is going to share some information with us. So thank you for coming today. And thank you, Matt, for representing animal care so greatly.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. I have not appeared in front of y'all for about three years. And I thought I would sort of give you a report before we had this election and changing. One thing I just came across when I was going through an old scrapbook was, in 1997, I had happened to cut out an article from the Beaumont Enterprise. And it's attached, to y'all that have a document. It's not attached for the audience. But the title of it is, "700 Canines Destroyed Each Month in Summer: A Dog's Death Row." And it talks about the shelter at that time in 1997. And I just wanted to bring that number up to show the contrast between then and now. So 1997, we had the article, 700 had to be destroyed in the summer each month. In 2014, we jumped ahead. That's before I actually came in, but when I, it was easy to get the data. The live release rate was only 27.5%. So that means basically one out of every four animals that went in the shelter came out alive. So that's a pretty, still a pretty horrendous death rate, right? 2016, I came on board as the city veterinarian. And the first goal that I made was to get the animals and the shelter healthy. When I first got there, there was parvo and distemper within the shelter. And I knew we just had to get that healthy. So thanks to the city council, y'all determined we could spend the money to get the shelter healthy. So we started vaccinating and deworming and defling. None of those things had been done prior to that. That year in 2016, we increased the live release rate to 47.8. That still meant that 52% didn't come out alive. 2017, once we got those animals a little bit more healthy, the live release rate went up to 61.3. During all this time, I personally was trying to figure out, how do I save more animals? I didn't really understand the world of rescues and transport and how it was until I got, you know, walking by all these dogs I knew were going to be gone tomorrow. So I actually, in 2018, was invited by Austin Pets Alive. And they have a conference. And by that time, though, I was already figuring out rescues around the nation and things like that. But 2018, I attended that conference. And that's the last time that I appeared in front of y'all. And I put a little blurb in there for Austin became no kill and how much money it brought into their economy to say that you're no kill. It brings jobs, it brings goodwill, it brings a lot of great things, plus more jobs when you have healthy animals and population. So at that time, Mayor Ames declared, let's make Beaumont a no kill city. And then there was a lot of work behind the scenes. We had to commit ordinance changes to enable, and the thing I'm going to feature a little bit today is something called trapped, neutered, and released. And you guys approved that for cats. And what that means is they catch the wild ones, we get them neutered or spayed, and we turn them back in the neighborhood where they had figured out how to eat before. It was a kind of a controversial deal at the time. But I want to show you how much that program itself has done. So that first year, I had formed a nonprofit to try to assist. And I agreed to let that nonprofit pay for the trap neuter and release to show that it would make a difference. And it wasn't really approved until halfway through the summer. So we did 117 feral cats that year, so in 2018. In 2019, in October, which is two-thirds of the year gone, the city began to pay for it and do the trap neutering and release. That year, we did 274. But it affected the live release rate of the shelter to not have to take each one of those cats in, put them in a cage, have them bite an employee, have to have them go to the hospital, have to have them off work, have to keep that cat 10 days. By doing this program where they didn't have to come in, we got the live release rate up to 86.7%. So it was really close within, you know, the first year or two to no kill status. No kill status means you have 90% of the animals that come into the shelter leave either through a rescue or adoption or, like in this case, the trap neuter and release program. So in 2020, to show you that it already was making a difference in the wild cats out there, the 274 cats from '19 dropped to 223 cats in '20. And the main thing is the day I walked into the shelter, and one of the people that cleans in the back said, "We have so many more, less cats right now than a year ago at this time. I can't believe how many less cats, how much that trap neutering and releasing has improved the overwhelming cat population." So when the lay staff is approaching and saying, "I see a difference within the first year or two," it's a big difference. So in 2020, 223 cats were TNR'd showing that program. And for the first time ever, due to a lot of work by a lot of people, we were no kill as a city with a live release rate of 92.5. And that's a huge accomplishment for Matt and his staff and everybody involved to make that happen. And in 2021, so far, we've maintained the no kill status every month. So I just wanted to say, who do you thank? Well, you thank the city council. And you thank Mayor Ames for making the directive and saying it was going to be something that she thought we should do. You also thank Chris Jarman, who isn't here anymore, but he did a lot of work to get those ordinances going. He was a great help. And Kyle Hayes helped do that work as well. Rescues, they are really the answer. And it's not just mine. Thank goodness, there's a lot of other ones. But in 2020, they pulled 1,133 animals out of the shelter. And that means they came there, they pulled them, they drove them all the way to Canada or Washington State or whatever. They made sure they got spayed, neutered. So that's a huge number that rescues take. All the volunteers that work to foster, transport, donate, and assist rescues to drive. You also have to thank kind of the veterinary population that helps and the veterinarian, I'm not just bragging, but the staff at Dallin Road were willing to take, because when they catch the wild cat, it has to come that day. It's got to be done that day. So you have to fit these extra cats in the schedule and believe in it so that you stop what else you're doing and neuter or spay them. So they deserve a thank you. And of course, the staff at Beaumont Animal Care for accepting all the changes and going to the efforts it takes to work with all the rescues and to adopt out. It's much more work to save an animal and post a picture and network it on Facebook and be kind to the rescues and answer the phone. It's more work. But they did a great job of making all those changes. And the last thing I put on your deal is a combination of the AVMA and the American Veterinary Medical Association. And this concept is pictured there about how we have a better world. And one health is in the center. And it's when you pay attention to your environment, your human health, and your animal health, all at the same time, combined to have the best overall population. So we've done a big circle here toward Beaumont, having a great one health. That's really all I had, except congratulations, Matt.
Yes, and to you too. I want to thank y'all so much. Kyle and I, actually, with two of our volunteers from the committee, as you know, about the, a little bit after, I think, when you went to Austin, we went to Waco and looked at their program because they had a very successful program. The thing that I was really impressed with is how they developed the nonprofit out of their shelter to spay and neuter and to raise money and to transport those animals. And the group here, and thank you to the city council for supporting these ordinances that we had to change because there were quite a few. And the TNR, the trap neuter release, was somewhat controversial. There were people that thought we should not do that. But in the, it takes a little while. But in the long run, those cats that are released stop reproducing because their spay are neutered. And so we don't get so many kittens in the spring like we would typically be getting around right now and next month. And so it makes a huge difference. And I'm very proud of that. And I know y'all are too. And I hope the council is too. And I hope the whole city staff and our citizens are too because it says a lot. There's not a whole lot of no kill cities in Texas, very few. And we, I think we kept that 90% every month in 2020, correct, Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
And so far, in 2021, in many of the months in the prior two years. So just keep it up. And I have, I called Dr. Kayes, the thorn in my side earlier because she was on me all the time to keep it going, keep it going. We can do it, we can do it. And I appreciate that because we can do it. And look how great it's working. And I think that all the people that work at animal care services have a lot of pride in what they're doing. And they are very proud of the fact of how far we've come. 700 animals in a month is a lot, and in a month. So just think about, and I really do like this environmental health, human health, and animal health brings together one health. And that's absolutely true. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kelly, don't you have something coming up here in the next couple of weeks that you were working on? A little project?
About maybe an event at the park?
Yeah.
If we've gotten that approved.
Well, I was just, if you want to tell them what you're working on, then hopefully everything will come together.
Yeah, we wanted to have an event at the park. And I like an adoption and fundraising and awareness of BPA and BAC.
The committee's working on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Matt, did you have anything or?
I just want to thank y'all. And just like she said, and with her help, we were able to accomplish that.
Yeah.
And this year, in the first quarter, we're at 95%.
Oh, wow.
So that's the highest ever.
Okay, very good. We have a lot of stats, don't we?
Oh, yes.
We do, we do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, and we do have three proclamations today. And the first one will be delivered by Councilmember Muton.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Lemonade Day is a free-fund program dedicated to teaching children how to start, own, and operate their own business through the simple and time-honored act of building and running a lemonade stand. Whereas the Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with the Del Papa Distributing Company, InterG, ExxonMobil, Howells Furniture, Urban Air Beaumont, along with many other companies and organizations, join forces to bring this program to Beaumont, Texas. Whereas children participating in the Lemonade Day program are encouraged to spend a little, save a little, and share a little by donating a portion of their profits to a local charity of their choice. Whereas Lemonade Day is a day of learning and celebrating our future. On May 2nd, 2021, the citizens of Beaumont are encouraged to show support by simply purchasing a lemonade from one of the youth participating in the program to demonstrate how our community cares for the future of our youth and for Beaumont's youngest entrepreneurs. Whereas all volunteers, organizations, organizers, and participants, and sponsors are commended for their dedication to this event. And best wishes are extended for successful and rewarding observance. Now, therefore, Becky Ames, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim Sunday, May 2nd, 2021, as Lemonade Day in Beaumont and encourage all citizens to participate. Accordingly, the mayor has here to set her hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed. Signed, Mayor Becky Ames, April 27th, 2021. And accepting the proclamation for Lemonade Day, Krista Hunter, Executive Director of the Beaumont Chamber Foundation, and sponsors of the Lemonade Day. If you will please come forward and accept the proclamation. We appreciate you coming and thank you so very much.
All right. Woo-hoo.
Thank you.
How good, uh? Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, hey, hey. Wait. Oh, hey, ain't it good, sir?
Thank you.
Yay, great job.
How are you doing? Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you again, and thank you.
Y'all can feel free to say a few words if you like.
We just encourage everybody to get out. There will be lemonade stands across Jefferson County. And you can find all the information on our website. There is a map. If you just Google Lemonade Day Jefferson County, scroll all the way to the bottom, and there is a map with all the locations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all. And I know the young people learn a lot from this. I've been to your events before, and they are so excited. So we appreciate you taking your time.
And we have a tasting contest going on tonight.
Oh.
Tasting the lemonade.
Where's the tasting?
It is at the Health and Wellness Center.
Do you have an address?
It's Krista's Health and Wellness Center.
Harrison.
Yeah.
Harrison.
Yeah, thank you.
Yay.
Councilmember Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, this is great. Anytime we can recognize one of our own, it's great. And whereas today is a privilege to recognize Molly Villarreal, a city engineer for the City of Beaumont as the Sabine Chapter, Texas Society of Professional Engineers, Engineer of the Year, 2021. Molly is being recognized for outstanding achievement and dedicated service to the engineering profession. Molly has been an employee of the City of Beaumont for 10 years and eight months. Obviously, this is some kind of junior high program we had back then. As the city engineer, Molly oversees, this is her areas of responsibility, and it's huge, water, sewer, paving, drainage projects for the city, including commercial land development disaster recovery project, zuh. Whereas Molly received her Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Stanford on the Neches, Lamar University, in 1997. She also received a graduate degree from Lamar in 2012. While attending Lamar, she received the Munt Civil Engineering Endowment Scholarship and the Scott Burmeister Endowment Scholarship. She was part of the National Action Council of Minorities in Engineering, NACME. She was a grant recipient, a student. Chair of the Host Committee for the 1997 Texas Branch of the American Society of Civil Engineers, ASCE State Meeting. Molly held the title of President of ASCE at Lamar University. Molly was also, while she was at Lamar University, a peer advisor, member and Vice President of Alpha Chi Omega and Leadership Lamar. Wow, and we're not done yet. Whereas a variety of accomplishments at the collegiate level, Molly went on to achieve greater things in her profession. She was, as the role of President of the Southeast Branch of the Texas Society of Professional Engineers. Within that organization, she served the State Meeting Host Committee in 2012. She also was affiliated with the Texas Water Utilities Association. Whereas aside from professional and educational achievements, she's invested in our community. She's a graduate of Leadership Beaumont. She is also a board member of the Beaumont Heritage Society for several years. She's been a part of the Golden Triangle Hazard Regional Incident Management Team and also provides an array of disaster management, critical infrastructure assessments, and restoration of essential services throughout southeast Texas. Now, now, therefore, Becky Ames, the Mayor of the City of Beaumont, is delighted to applaud Molly Villarreal for her selfless dedication to the City of Beaumont and hereby recognizes, on the 27th day of April, Molly Villarreal, Engineer of the Year. She's going to be right here in Beaumont. We congratulate her. This is accordingly signed by the mayor. Seal of Beaumont has been approved. And picking this up is the one and only Molly Villarreal. And she's modest, too. Proud of you. This is great. Hey.
Can we actually have Keith Socksky here from Sabine?
Okay, please come forward. All right. Thank you, Bart. So Keith, you want to say anything?
Don't say anything, Keith.
Typical engineer fashion.
I tried to stay out of the spotlight.
So can you read the plaque for us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
It's the TSP Sabine Chapter Engineer of the Year Award for Molly Villarreal for her outstanding achievements and dedicated service to the engineering profession.
Yeah, I'm nervous, right? Okay.
No, it's fine. We know you.
Yes. I do want to thank the Sabine Branch, the Texas Society of Professional Engineers, for this honor. It is unexpected and it's very humbling to receive this award. I want to thank my parents, who are here with me today. They instilled in me from an early age the importance of faith, family, service, and education. And of course, I must give thanks to God, who has ordered my steps and blessed me on my path to today. That path started with the educators in the Port Arthur, Port Arthur, PA, Independent School District, who recognized me for the summit program and always challenged me to do and be better. I've been fortunate to work for the first Hispanic and the first African-American Texas area engineers of the Beaumont District while I attended Lamar University. And then I worked with the former county engineer, Mr. Billy Howell, who taught me one important lesson that he wanted me to always remember. Stick to your guns, girl. He saw others that would try to challenge or question my work. And also, our new county engineer, Michelle Falgue, who was my first example that women can succeed in engineering. It was intimidating to join the city after working on the other side of the table as a consultant. But the city has enabled me to practice engineering as a service to others. It sometimes forces us to make difficult decisions that may be unpopular. But as engineers, we are tasked first and foremost to operate ethically with the impartial protection of the health and safety of all our citizens and our environment while remaining stewards of the city's resources. I'm thankful again for the opportunity to serve, and I'm thankful for this recognition today. Thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Molly, do you want a picture with your parents?
Sure, of course.
You're the Engineer of the Year. What do you want?
Molly, thank you so much for your service. And you've had a few challenges over the last few years. I can vouch for that and have done an excellent job. And, you know, some of my favorite women in the world are engineers. So you can make it as a woman in engineering. I know a couple that are just amazing. I won't mention names because today's your day. Today's Molly's day. But thank y'all, thank you so much. Do y'all want to, you want to get in front of the council here? No, he doesn't want to. That's all right, that's all right. She knows her way around.
One of them's found.
Congratulations, congratulations to y'all.
Congratulations.
Yay.
And I will read our last proclamation today. I remember when all this started and very proud to deliver this proclamation. Whereas the Lavoy family has made a profound mark on the establishment of community soccer in southeast Texas. On April 11th, 1965, Jasper Lavoy, a St. Anthony's graduate, and Deborah Kimbrough, a South Park graduate, married in Beaumont, Texas. The couple had seven children, three girls and four boys. In 1977, after trying several different sports, they found that all of their children could play one game, which was soccer. The couple enrolled all of their children into the YMCA to play the sport. And whereas in 1978, the Lavoy's dining room table, along with Liz and Jerry Sandell, Butch and Judy LeBeauve, Sherry Babbin, and Reverend and Marie Calcoe, they formed the Beaumont Youth Soccer Club, and Jasper Lavoy became the president. The Beaumont Youth Soccer Club started with 55 players and quickly grew to over 3,000 players in less than five years. And whereas the Lavoy's helped Orange, Lumberton, Nederland, and Winnie set up their leagues, and all together, they formed the Spindletop Youth Soccer Association with the members being Beaumont Youth Soccer Club, Gulf Coast Youth Soccer, Hardin County Youth Soccer, Orange County Youth Soccer, and Seabreeze Youth Soccer. Jasper Lavoy then became the president of the Spindletop Youth Soccer Association. And whereas this group developed the Babe Zahariah soccer fields and had local welders donate their time and supplies to make over 40 soccer goals. They personally used diesel to mark the layout each and every field, and Deborah sewed every... every corner flag and used those for the first few years. Due to the lack of soccer apparel and equipment in Beaumont, and to give players convenient local accessibility, they opened the Soccer Selection in 1981. It was a store geared towards nothing but soccer shoes, clothing, and equipment. Oftentimes, most of the items were donated to the less fortunate and can enjoy the sport as well. And whereas both Jasper and Deborah Lavoy became state-certified coaches and referees, donating hours of their time to the sport, they love to establish credit to the talent coming out of the Beaumont area. Also, in the 1980s, they traveled to San Jose, California, and received their national B-level coaching licenses. Deborah was one of the first females to reach such a prestigious level of coaching. They hosted several tournaments that brought some of the highest convention revenue in Beaumont history to the area. You couldn't find an open hotel room from Orange to Winnie during these tournaments. I can actually vouch for that because I was in that business at the time. This in professional soccer players and trainers from Italy, Colombia, Germany, and other countries to advance the technique of Beaumont-area players. This also allowed players to be competitive at higher levels against teams from major cities across the United States. And whereas in 1991, they received permission from Lamar University to clean up the unused football stadium. They held tryouts and formed a men's and women's club soccer team, which they also coached. The lead to the development at Lamar's Women's Division won soccer program. And whereas Jasper and Deborah saw potential in drainage floodplain area off Major Drive, and they used their knowledge from the Babe Zaharias Project to develop a first-class soccer facility in Beaumont. Thus, they created the Meadows Soccer Complex, now known as the Chris Quinn Soccer Complex. And whereas Jasper and Deborah coached and refereed soccer in the Beaumont area for over 20 years, the game of soccer is still a part of their lives today, as they cheer on their granddaughter who plays for the University of Houston. And now, therefore, I, Becky Ames, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, applaud Jasper and Deborah Lavoy for their selfless dedication to the community and to the establishment of thriving soccer community, and do hereby recognize this 27th day of April 2021 in honor of Jasper and Deborah Lavoy in Beaumont. And we thank this family for their hard work and dedication to the furthering of our local soccer program. Accordingly, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, and accepting today is none and other than Jasper and Deborah Lavoy, and any other affiliated soccer groups that may be in the audience may come up at this time. Shake everyone's hand, and y'all, please feel free to say a few words. I will say that soccer has been huge in the Beaumont community, and we all celebrate when they come into town because they use our hotels, they use our service stations, and they use our restaurants. And it brings tax revenue and hotel occupancy taxes. And thank y'all so much for starting this, and it has just been grand, and I know it will continue. So y'all, please come forward and feel free to say a few words. Yes.
Yay.
Yes, come on up. And this is your proclamation. Thank you so much. I've heard from a blast from the past, Eddie Minable, about all. Yes, I've worked with him for a long time. Here you go. Thank you so much, and we appreciate you, and feel free to shake everyone's hand.
So proud of you. Of course, you know that.
So, are y'all with, y'all can stand up. All the people with the Lavoy's, y'all stand up and let us recognize you.
We're so proud of you, but you already.
Mr. Lavoy, you want to take a few words there?
Mayor Ames, distinguished chamber. I'd like to thank you for this honor. It's something we did not anticipate or expect. But we thank you very much. It means a lot to us to be recognized. You know, all these years we've put into this, and you think no one realizes what you've done, and then we're brought up here and honored like this. It means a lot to us. It really does.
Well, we're happy to do it, and we thank you for all your contribution to our city and to the youth of our city. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Sure. Of course.
This is our immediate family right here. They have come from, all the way from San Antonio.
All right.
And so, we've got a good group here, plus all these guys behind me here.
Okay, one, two, three.
One, two, three. Gotcha.
Thank y'all.
Mayor, if I may, I saw Ralph Mazzola back there, and he was talking about what a great job that you did about getting, helping him get it started in Hardin County. And it got hundreds and hundreds of kids from Hardin County playing as well. So Ralph drove all the way over from Houston, and he called me just for them. They're the best.
Thank y'all so much for coming, everyone. That does conclude our presentations and proclamations. So if you're here for that purpose and you need to leave, now is the time to do so. But of course, you're always welcome to stay. Oh, it's huge. It's huge. So while they're exiting, I will remind the council, if you haven't remembered that, The boys are really appreciative, aren't they?
I'm telling them.
So before we move any further, I just would like to remind everyone, before COVID, we started this, and then after COVID, we started it again. But we decided, if y'all will remember, I believe in January, that we would have a night meeting the second month of each quarter on the first Tuesday. That will be next Tuesday. So next Tuesday will be an evening meeting. Just for our listening audience and also for our council, it's always the second month, the first Tuesday, which would be May 4th in this case. Okay, now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment on Scheduled Agenda Items Eight through Eleven, the time to do so is now. Items number one through seven have already been heard in a joint public hearing between the City Council and the Planning Commission, so are not available for comment. But right now, it's for Eight through Eleven or the Consent Agenda. If you are here to speak on Item Number Twelve, which is Dangerous Structures, we will have a separate public hearing on Number Twelve. So if you're here for a dangerous structure, please wait till we finish the general business, and I will open up the microphone again for that purpose. And then after that, I'll open it up again for anyone who wishes to speak on any item. But right now, it's for Eight through Twelve, I'm sorry, Eight through Eleven, Eight through Eleven or the Consent Agenda. If you haven't already done so and would like to speak on Eight through Eleven, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room, hand it to the city clerk at the front of the room. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Right now, it's for Eight through Eleven or the Consent Agenda.
Mark McCleland, 1270 Nottingham Lane, Beaumont, Texas, Item Number Eight on the Agenda.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark McCleland. I'm going to speak on Item Number Eight. I see that you all are about to purchase eight more buses. If I remember correctly, and I think I do, some time ago, Councilperson Getz mentioned that possibly the council and the city should look into possibly exploring ride share for citizens in the state, in the city. And I'm sure I'm pretty much correct that, obviously, Councilperson Samuel was the one that objected to it. But Councilperson Getz had no idea if it would work or not, nor, I don't believe, Councilperson Samuel would. However, he was also brought up at some point in time, maybe you should do a study on the ridership of the buses. Of course, now you're going to, I'm sure, in a few minutes, going to agree to buy eight buses for about $300 and some thousand dollars and $4 million altogether. If you do any research at all, you're going to, and you look at stories titled something like "It's Expensive to Be Poor in America," and you're going to find a lot of comments about things, an awful lot about banking, and the fees that are structured to the less fortunate in banking, real estate. There's a common thread through all these stories and research papers is public transportation. And I look across you all, and I think you said, well, we're doing them a great service. We're giving them really cheap transportation. And I hear things like, well, I have a master's degree in economics, or I have a good heart, and I want to help everybody, or I want to represent everybody in Beaumont. Well, you know, if you have a job, you've got to start at 8:30. I'm going to guess you may have to start walking from your home, 7:15 maybe? Take you an hour and 15 minutes to get to your job, and an hour and 15 minutes to get home. Now, I've lived here long enough that you can drive the length or the breadth of Beaumont in 10 minutes. So now, you've taken two and a half or three hours out of someone's day. What if that person wants to improve their life? The failure to even investigate some alternative method to maybe give some people two or three more hours a day to take, like I did, and go to welding school and learn how to weld, okay? And improve their station in life, rather than just taking the position, we need to have a kumbaya meeting, go along to get along, and don't even open up outside the box. And a lot of it, I think, is from gut reaction. And it doesn't give me a great deal of confidence in my city leaders when they structure all of their opinions based on a gut reaction. You can do detailed studies to find out if Councilperson Getz had a viable idea, or Councilperson Samuel was 100% correct that it wouldn't work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCleland.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas. She's speaking on Item D on the Consent Agenda and Item Number Eight on the Agenda.
Good afternoon, council, Mayor and council and city officials. I'm standing here. My name is Addie Allen. And the reason I'm standing here, the gentleman just talked about the busing situation, and I'm glad to know that you're doing buses. The only thing that I'm sad about is coupling that, adding eight new buses, and then reinstate the charging fare. And of course, we're in the pandemic, people are without jobs, there are maintenance issues. I passed by a bus that I thought the fender might fall off on my car. But bottom line is, I applaud you in doing that, but I would ask like the gentleman before, and I'm sure you've done study. You know, I'm sure that's been done. You don't act irresponsible. But bottom line is, I would ask the council to consider talking about the reinstatement of charging for fare. There's not that many people riding, from what I see, but I'm not on the streets all day and all night. But bottom line is, we have people that are having problems, and those people that are riding the bus is because they have to. I see some of them have the mask. So let's have some compassion, and that's all I'm asking. Because I stood here, and I don't know if I'm out of order with the one with ExxonMobil, is that?
That's Item D on the Consent Agenda.
So I'm in order?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that one. I have people that stay in Hildebrandt. My concern is, you're letting ExxonMobil have it for $1,400, and that's good, maybe? But then I don't think so, because if they do damage to the property, you're saying they're going to redo whatever they do or put it in order? I don't think so. You're going to let them gate that property, and you're letting them temporarily use it? I don't think so. There was a water boil out in Hildebrandt. Those people went through problems having to have their utilities go up because they had to boil their water. So is there a whole harmless agreement for when you dig or trench, put pipe in there, and then it affects, you know, the people that are around there? That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Alto Watson, 2615 Gladys, Beaumont, Texas, Items Number Eight and Nine on the Agenda.
I came up here to speak on a different issue, but I didn't know that the buses are part of this issue. For years and years and years, I've advocated for buses in this town. I specifically stood before the council and said, the greatness of a city is determined by how they perform for the least of those in the city. And public transportation here is very important. Like the lady said, people are riding the bus because they have to, not because they want to. And I have said, look, maybe buses ought to be free. I said, you know, one of the richest towns in the country is Vail, Colorado. The buses are free. You can ride from Vail to Breckenridge, Colorado for nothing. And people get on with $100,000 sable coats, and they don't pay anything for the bus ride. But when I'm looking at y'all buying eight new buses, which, you know, I can't believe I'm going to say this, has, and I don't know if the council said this, I've had a long-running feud privately with Mr. Getz about the buses and everything, and I'm wondering, has there ever been a study done to determine if smaller buses might be something better and have people call and pick you up, or whether there could be vouchers for people who don't have much money and they're riding the bus to catch an Uber and have the city pay for that? I mean, I don't know how much these buses are going to cost. I'm sure they're very, very expensive, but I mean, I think you could buy everybody a car that might need the transportation. And I've kind of come around to Mr. Getz's position on this. If it hasn't been studied to see what smaller buses that you could pick people up, like you do with people that are handicapped, and whether that would be more cost-effective and better for the small minority of people who are riding the buses, because damn it, they need the bus. Okay, I don't want y'all to get rid of buses, but maybe something that would be more cost-effective and better suited for people who need to go from their house to Walmart, or from their house to the grocery store. And I'm a bus advocate, but maybe a study, if you haven't done it, please do it. If you have, then I don't know what the respect of it is. Thank you for buying good buses.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Is there any other citizen who wishes to speak on Eight through Eleven or the Consent Agenda? If there's no one, I'll close the floor. Council, I'll entertain a motion, please, on the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion for approval, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? There being none, it passes unanimously. Before we move on to Item Number One, I would like to turn the meeting over to the Mayor Protim. I am affiliated with the company that is involved in this, and the other company is our client, so I'm going to remove myself from the dais and this vote.
Thank you, Mayor. May we have the reading of Item Number One?
Mayor and Council, item number one is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-eight of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, and in particular, the boundaries of the zoning districts as indicated upon the zoning map of Beaumont, Texas. By changing the zoning of property presently zoned C M, Commercial Manufacturing District, to H I, Heavy Industrial District for property located at the southeast edge of the Beaumont City Limits between highways three forty-seven and sixty-nine south, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. John Johnson is requesting a zone change for fifty-three point four-one acres. The property owner is considering a contract with a new chemical manufacturing facility. At a joint public hearing held on April the nineteenth, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request. The administration recommends approval.
Counsel, you have the reading of item number one. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion or, and/or questions?
No questions.
Counselor, may I?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, has there been any tax abatements requested for this?
Not specifically. And if so, we'll bring that to the council, play in an executive session.
Any other questions? There's a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The motion carries with one abstention. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a mini storage facility in the G C M D, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling District, for property located at nineteen thirty College Street, City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The applicant is requesting, again, a specific use permit for self-storage facility. A joint public hearing held on April the nineteenth, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request with four conditions that are listed in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with the same four conditions.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number two. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Move to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval, and I assume it's with the conditions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, number three, please.
Mayor and Council, item number three is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow a retail facility and condominiums in a G C M D two, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling Two District, for property located at forty-five fifteen North Major Drive, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Fook Nat Lee is requesting an amended specific use permit. A joint public hearing on April the nineteenth, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request with the following condition, that being to relocate fire hydrants. The administration recommends approval with the same condition.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of number three. Is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, looking back through this, this is the third time this has come to council for vote, is that correct? September, December, and then now?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess I still have the same opinion as I did the first time. I'd like to see projects developed in Beaumont. But I'm getting really concerned about that area right there with the lack of traffic signals that we have in the area. Are we still moving forward with the study for the traffic light there?
So it's my understanding that engineering is looking at signalizing the intersection Major and Northwest Parkway. And it's also my understanding is that we've been in discussion with a developer of this property to try to arrange the driveways where it would intersect directly with a signalized Northwest Parkway. So, again, that is in the works.
All right, thank you.
Major and Village is approved now, so we're moving forward to, we'll be moving forward to construct that soon. We got the letter from Tech dot. We're doing the work to get the approval from Tech dot on the Major and Northwest.
Thank you.
Counselor, get.
You read my mind, Bart. I was going to ask where we were on that soon being thirty, sixty, ninety days, or any idea?
Weather permitting, we should be out there working in the next, you know, week or two. So, but we got the letter last week from them finally formalizing it.
What kind of timeline are we looking at, too?
Again, weather permitting, probably thirty, forty-five days-ish, maybe?
Fantastic, thank you.
Anything else, any other questions, comments, counsel? Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow restaurant parking in an R C R, Residential Conservation Revitalization District, for property located at thirteen twenty-five College Street, City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Rosa and San Fuentes Francisco Castillo would like to use the property located at nine fifty-eight, nine seventy-eight Orange Avenue and thirteen fifty Gilbert Street to expand the parking, again, for a proposed restaurant. At a joint public hearing held on April the nineteenth, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request with five conditions that are listed in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with those same five conditions.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number four. Is there a motion on this item?
So moved for approval.
Thank you, I assume that's with the five conditions? Thank you, and a second for the same. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Item number five, please.
Mayor and Council, item number five is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-eight of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, and in particular, the boundaries of the zoning districts as indicated upon the zoning map of Beaumont, Texas. By changing the zoning of property presently zoned R S, Residential Single Family Dwelling District, to R M H, Residential Multiple Family Dwelling Highest Density District for property located at twenty-nine ninety South Major Drive, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. Back in January of twenty sixteen, the applicant received a specific use permit to provide twenty-four-hour care for twelve elderly residents at twenty-nine ninety South Major Drive, and caretakers that plan would be to be present twenty-four hours per day, but not living at the property. Property to the north was purchased and is currently zoned R S. And in order to consider a specific use permit on this additional land, it will need to be rezoned to R M H to match the existing assisted living facility. At a joint public hearing held on April the nineteenth, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request with six conditions listed in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with those same six conditions.
Okay, thank you. Do we need two separate motions on the zone and the specific use?
Yes, zone, please.
All right. Is there a motion, please, for the rezoning request?
So moved to approve the rezoning.
Thank you.
Conditions?
The conditions are on the specific use permit, I believe, which is the next one.
On the, okay, thank you.
You're good. Okay, there's a motion on the floor for approval of the rezoning. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? There being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And now I will entertain a motion for the specific use permit, which does hold the conditions.
Move to approve the specific use permit with the conditions listed.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number six, please.
Item number six is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow expansion of a school in the G C M D, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling District, for property located at one oh-two five-five East Tex Freeway, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Stephen West is requesting permission to expand a charter school at this location. At a joint public hearing held on April the nineteenth, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request with the following condition, that being an amended specific use permit would be required at this address should the buildings be leased or sold to a different owner or user. We recommend approval with the same condition.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number six. Is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve with the condition.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval with the condition as listed. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a duplex and an R S, Residential Single Family Dwelling District, for property located at six eighty-five Jenny Lane, in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. James Callis is requesting the specific use permit. A joint public hearing held on April the nineteenth, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request. The administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you, counsel. You've heard the reading of item number seven. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion or questions, Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question, was there any objection from the neighborhood on this?
Yes, sir, we did have one objection from a neighbor. I believe they were, they are located off Tana Lane to the east, but not immediately adjacent. But we did receive one objection.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, please.
Mayor and Council, item number eight is to consider a resolution approving the purchase of eight C N G or compressed natural gas buses for use by the Beaumont Municipal Transit System. Beaumont Municipal Transit currently operates eighteen buses to provide transit service, services throughout the city. Pricing was obtained on eight approximately thirty-foot C N G buses. The price per bus is five hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, with delivery to the city in approximately twelve months, if you approve it. The Federal Transportation Administration requires that the new buses be operated until they reach three hundred and fifty thousand miles or ten years of age. The buses that are being retired had to be in service for twelve years or exceed five hundred thousand miles per federal regulations. So the city is proposing to replace eight buses that were acquired back in two thousand and nine. All buses that are removed from service will be placed on auction or disposed of according to grant guidelines. Total pricing in the amount of four million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars was obtained from Gilleg Manufacturing Company of Livermore, California, through the Commonwealth of Virginia Pricing Contract. Commonwealth of Virginia is a state purchasing contract that complies with F T A procurement statute. Funds are available from a federal transportation administrative grant. You can see in the amount of three million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. And then the municipal transit fund would pay three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, you've heard the reading of number eight. Is there a motion on this item?
So moved for approval.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. I would like to clarify, city manager, and if this is passed and it's not right anymore, please let me know. But there, I always get comments about the size of the buses, that we should try to get smaller buses because they're, they're on, they're not, the ridership doesn't fill up those large buses. And we hear that a lot. As I remember, to get that three million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand with the, with the matching of three eighty-nine, I'm, I'm sorry, three million, yes, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand. We have to get the larger buses. I know it doesn't make sense, or it never has to us before, but that's been the requirement.
Well, so the regs before, they changed periodically. So the larger buses would last, you know, twelve years, and you could get the five hundred thousand miles. Now they've changed that to three hundred and fifty thousand miles or ten years of age. And we agree, we don't like seeing the buses not as utilized. I mean, to hold that number of people, they are large buses. And we, we quite frankly wish it were different, but here's the deal. For decades, when this was first started in Beaumont, Texas, the federal government and the state pay roughly fifty percent of the operating cost every year. So you get that federal money with the federal strings attached, and there are stipulations and regulations. That's what we follow. So if you didn't accept the federal money or the state money, you could design your own transportation system any way you choose. But, you know, we've seen them pay for fifty percent of capital costs, new buses. This time, it's closer to, you know, it's ninety-some-odd percent. So to, if you want to accept that money, and they're paying the great, lion's share of the cost, then these buses are going to have to last for ten years or three hundred and fifty thousand miles. Therefore, you know, you spec out the larger buses that are going to last that period of time. So to answer your question, we wish the larger buses had more riders on them. And if we were paying for it ourselves, we'd probably make a recommendation to you for a smaller bus.
Okay. And in addition to that, I know that there's been some talk about ride share. I know very well the mayor of Arlington. And I'm disappointed that anyone would think that we would vote on something like this without doing any research whatsoever. But I know that that is one of the cities that we targeted because they did go to a ride share program. They bought buses, they got rid of them, and now they've gone to a ride share. And what were the, what was the information we got from Arlington?
Mr. Boone knows the stats better than I do, but very, very costly. Just tell him what Arlington spends per ride.
So Arlington's spending approximately nine million dollars, which is a little shy of twice what we're paying. It's my understanding, in the last couple of years, on average, they've had a hundred and fifty thousand rides, which is much, much, much less than what we provide. We estimate that their per trip, per ride, is sixty dollars per ride, which is much, much higher than ours. I think there's been a lot of discussion about ride share, and we have, we have been looking into it for several years now. We think that with the technology advancing, we think that may be, and may indeed be the future. But so far, I, we don't think we're there yet. And so when we look at Arlington, again, it's, they're spending nine million dollars for much fewer rides. The fares, as we understand it, per trip range from three dollars to more than five dollars, which is twice our fare. So there are a lot of factors to consider. But again, we are watching Arlington, we just don't feel like they're, we're there yet.
And they have about four hundred thousand people, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor, Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. The, back when we signed the new agreement with the company that took over the transit system, one of the things that was in the agreement was doing a, kind of getting a census force of how many people are riding the buses. Have we made any progress on that? I know COVID kind of set us back, but.
We had more during COVID.
Yes, sir. So part of the agreement with First Transit in their bid response was that they would conduct a, an efficiency study, which is look at all the routes, look at the ridership. I know we've had discussions in the past about how many unique riders we have in the city. That's a, that's a more difficult number to get a hold of. But we feel like we can get a better idea of what's, what are the efficient routes? You know, what routes need to be maybe added service to, et cetera. So in their bid response back last year, they did agree to conduct a feasibility study within the first year of the contract. I think we executed that contract back in October, so they're still well within the first year. Having said that, they've given us some indication that during COVID may not be the best time to do the feasibility study, given the fact that we're not charging fares. People's transportation patterns may have changed. Now that things are hopefully getting back to more normal, we're starting to have those conversations with First Transit about, you know, getting that feasibility study started.
Counselor, Neil, time?
Thank you, Mayor. This is to our city manager. Can you clarify exactly what we're spending? on the purchase of the buses?
Three eighty-nine.
Yeah, and for these eight buses, the city, the, the local taxpayers are paying a little over three hundred eighty-nine thousand.
Of the four million one hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Gads?
You know, for years, I've been asking for this information about what is our unique ridership. We don't have an idea of what our unique ridership is, other than from census data. And it's hard to make decisions that will be long-lasting decisions, a commitment of ten years, without having the information you need to have in front of you. I've also been tagged with the uh, idea that I'm trying to get rid of the buses. I'm not trying to get rid of the buses. I am asking the question, and I have for many years now asked the question, as to whether or not there is a better way to serve our system, our citizens that need public transportation. Arlington's not the only city that's gone to ride share programs. And, you know, I don't know that you can compare Arlington to Beaumont. Apples to apples, population's larger, the square mileage is, is different, but I do know this, that I live on a bus route, and I see buses drive by my house all the time. And they're usually empty, other than the driver, maybe one passenger. And maybe there are buses in other parts of Beaumont that have much more ridership. I would like to know that. I would like to know how many unique riders actually ride the bus. You know, at some point, it was estimated that we might have a thousand people, a thousand people that actually ride the bus. Well, if that's true, then we're spending roughly five million of taxpayer dollars, and I know that only a part of that's local, but it's still all taxpayer dollars. Well, that's five thousand dollars a person we're spending, if it's a thousand. But what if it's only five hundred? And I personally think that's probably a more realistic number. Well, if it's only five hundred people that actually use the bus, then we're spending ten thousand dollars per person to ride the bus. But what if it's lower than that? What if there's only a hundred people that actually use the bus? We don't know. We can find out, but we don't know. If it's a hundred, we're spending fifty thousand dollars per person to ride the bus. Is the company that's running our bus system, uh, do they have a representative here today?
Yes, Albert Eby is their manager. He is here.
Could, Mr. Eby, could you come forward? I have a question for you. Mr. Eby, uh, part of the basis of me voting to hire your company to take over Beaumont Transit Authority was your commitment to doing a ridership survey, and also the fact that your company has a great reputation and is one of the largest managers of public transportation in the country. So could you tell me, is it possible, and what would it involve, to do a ridership study in order to try to determine unique riders that actually use the bus in Beaumont?
Yes, sir. It's definitely possible. It, it's a challenge because it does require some extrapolation, but we can come up with statistically significant uh, number of unique riders. As Mr. Boone stated earlier, the challenge currently is COVID. Uh, we do have um, folks that are using Beaumont Transit vehicles for purposes other than transportation. So our agreement or our proposal to the city of Beaumont was that we would do a, a study, not only of possibly a number of unique riders, but where the buses go, how they transfer, um, and how they move throughout the city uh, in the second six months of our contract. We spent the first six months trying to get compliance where it needs to be. Frankly, that was more challenging than we had anticipated. We are, and I have spoke with our regional vice president regarding the study. We have a consultant um, that is ready to go. We have been having difficulty identifying uh, the folks that would get on a bus with a tablet that would actually go out and try to determine the number of unique riders because of the COVID outbreak. So we are still battling that, but it definitely can be done, and our commitment to the city is that we will do that.
You mentioned that there's people riding the bus for, other than purposes of public transportation. What are you talking about?
Um, it's a comfortable place. It's got air conditioning, it's got heating, so there is some vagrancy on the buses. There's no doubt about it. There's vagrancy at Dan and Mom Station, but um, we are committed to managing that. It's no different in Beaumont than it is in many large cities like Beaumont. So um, there are issues uh, on both sides, I think, of the, the fare discussion. And, and one of them is the challenge of, of vagrancy by not collecting fares. That can have an impact, not only on si, on safety, but also security.
But you will commit to us today that within the next six months, your company will do a ridership study and try to come up with uh, the number of unique riders that use our bus system?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Mayor, if I could point out one thing, the buses in this item, the larger buses are actually, they are smaller than the current uh, buses. The current ones we have are thirty-five feet, these are thirty feet, so they're a little bit smaller. But the, the big factor being that they're really industrial quality instead of um,
That they will last longer.
Commercial quality of the, the, the less durable vehicles.
Thank you very much for that. Yes.
Chris, um, I know this is before us today for a vote. I would really, really like to have the information and data that uh, the company has committed to providing us within the next six months before I vote on this. I mean, we're talking about a ten-year commitment here and millions of dollars, taxpayer dollars. Is it essential that this be determined today, or is it possible to put this off? I realize that we have grant funding that we don't want to jeopardize, but uh, what timeline? Could you explain that, please?
I can share that this bid, again, out of the Virginia Commonwealth, I think it, it is, uh, the pricing is limited, I think, to the end of this month. Doesn't mean we couldn't um, um, you know, perhaps get that reinstated, but we might have to go out through our own bid process to get it. In terms of the funding being at risk, the purchase of these vehicles, I think, is spread across six different grants. It's, it's everything from Tech Dot Fleet Replacement Grant that we talked about back in January to FTA fifty-three thirty-nine. There are also toll credits. So I could, we could dig to try and figure out which one of those grants we would lose. I know some of them are from prior years, um, but, you know, if we had to look three months, six months down the line, I suspect we'd lose some. I just can't tell you exactly which ones.
It, it kind of puts me in a difficult situation, because what if we come back and this study does show that, yeah, Mr. Gads, you were right, there's, there's only, you know, a hundred people or five hundred people using the bus, or some low number. And I, I don't really think that that, that it's as low as a hundred, but what if it is? And we've committed for ten years, and now we're spending an average of fifty thousand dollars a person, a rider. I, I don't know that there's anybody up here that would think that that is an efficient way of using our taxpayer dollars. Maybe there are, I don't know. Uh, I haven't done a poll of the, the council. But uh, you know, I certainly wouldn't think that that would be an appropriate way to use taxpayer dollars. Having information to make big decisions like this is, is important. And um, it's, it's very difficult for me to support something like this without having the information I need to make that decision.
Any questions or comments?
Quick question. Kyle, when we go through these buses and replace them, we usually auction them off, do we not? Uh, do we get some reasonable amount of money uh, based on, I mean, they're still operational, and some, some cities could use them for a while, uh, and isn't that basically what we usually do?
Um, question for you, Chris. You've made the comment about um, the bidding that we would, we could go out on our own. Was this a group bid for a group of cities? Is that why you said that?
So it's, we basically use the Virginia, state of Virginia's bid uh, process to secure these prices. And again, this all has to comply with FTA and Tech Dot rules, and so um, by using the state of Virginia's, we were able to get, you know, get this bid amount through the, through that process.
So it's like a conglomeration of different people that might use it, like, because you said we'd have to go out on our own.
Well, so like, if we did not move forward with, and let's say these, these prices expired, and we weren't able to use the Virginia uh, purchasing system, you know, we can always go out on our own. It's just we risk higher prices, and it is a, it's a prolonged process, so.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? There is a motion and a second on the floor. All in approval, all on, all on approval of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion is pa, motion, motion passes with one no. Sorry. I'm okay, thank you. All right, number nine, please.
Mayor, council, item number nine is to consider resolution approving the purchase of eight paratransit buses for use by Beaumont Municipal Transit. Beaumont Municipal Transit currently operates ten paratransit buses uh, to provide services throughout the city. Pricing was obtained for eight twenty-four-foot buses, and the price per bus is one hundred eighteen thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars, with delivery in approximately six months. The Federal Transportation Administration requires that these buses be operated until they reach one hundred thousand miles or four years of age. Uh, the buses that are being retired had to be in service for six years or exceed one hundred thousand miles. So the city is replacing eight buses that we acquired back in two thousand and ten. A total pricing in the amount of nine hundred and forty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars was obtained from Creative Bus Sales of Irving, Texas, through the Texas Smart Buy Purchasing Contract, which is a state cooperative purchasing association that complies with FTA procurement statutes. Funds are available from a Federal Transportation Administrative Grant in the amount of eight hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred nine dollars, and from the Municipal Transit Fund in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of item number nine. Is there a motion on this item?
Sure moved.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Sure.
It's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Um, councilmember Neil? Any discussion? Councilmember Gads?
Chris, on the special transportation uh, buses, do we have better numbers that we can use? Because they generally take one passenger at a time, do they not? So how, how much ridership do we have for these buses?
Albert, do you recall the current, and to your point, we probably could, because we do get names and numbers. We do get, we do have better date on STS.
Pre-COVID, we were doing approximately two hundred trips per day. Currently, it's a little over one hundred trips per day, but we have seen those numbers come back, and we are expecting to be at pre-COVID level sometime during the calendar this year. As far as unique passengers, uh, we do have a database that is, that is um, uh, very dated that we assumed from the last contractor. We are moving to an electronic database, and we'll have those answers as to exactly how many folks are active in the program currently, uh, within the next sixty to ninety days.
Could you describe for myself and the public what criteria you have to have in order to qualify for a ride uh, on this type of public transportation?
The uh, complimentary paratransit was introduced by Federal Transit back in the not, in the eighties, prior to the American with Disability Act. Uh, so many of the buses did not have access for wheelchairs or for folks that had to climb stairs. So uh, as the industries have evolved, uh, much of our uh, buses, like the ones uh, earlier approved today, have low floors, they have ramps, they have wheelchair stations. So um, this is tr, is specifically for folks that, A, either can't access a fixed route bus due to uh, maybe the sidewalk network, due to their, to some other sort of disability. It does require certification from a physician that um, meets the requirements of, of the Americans with Disability Act. It's only valid within three-quarters of a mile of a fixed route bus stop, which currently serves the vast majority of, well over ninety-five percent of the city of Beaumont. So we do have a lot of folks um, on the system that may can't ride the fixed route bus because they're coming from dialysis, which is one of our largest generators of trips. Typically, after dialysis, our passengers find themselves in such a, a medical state that it's very difficult for them to walk either to the bus stop from the dialysis center or to their home uh, once they have reached their destination. So it, it still fills a need, it's still a requirement of Federal Transit that we provide a complimentary paratransit uh, system through the formula allocations that come uh, from Washington DC and as well as Austin. So um, it's a valuable service, but by ordering more accessible fixed route buses, we do minimize the number of paratransit passengers, because paratransit uh, trips typically, not typically, are, are always more expensive. Part of the software, uh, to your other question, um, will group passengers better together? So if we're picking up passengers in the same area of town, they're going to a same location, the software will help us tremendously in making these routes more efficient, uh, bringing down our cost per passenger, which on paratransit is, is significant. It will also allow the passengers to prepay, so we can go through our software and, and minimize cash handling on the vehicles.
The buses that were just authorized to be purchased, the, the large buses, uh, they, in essence, can do just about everything that the smaller paratransit buses can do. Is that right, as far as getting wheelchairs on and off?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so explain to me one more time why we need to have, like, the, these are on-demand, basically, buses that, well, not on-demand, but you, you have to schedule these a day in advance. Is that still true?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you can schedule it, it can come to your house, take you to where you need to go. I think they will wait on you and then take you back to your house. What, what is it that authorizes or allows citizens to be able to use that versus a regular bus?
There are probably two or three things that make that more challenging. Federal Transit still has not uh, fully embraced microtransit, which is more of an on-demand type public service. So operating assistance for micro, microtransit is different than it is for fixed route buses, and this is just part of the, the bureaucracy in Washington, the rulemaking, the public information, the administrative requirements through USDOT and Federal Transit Administration. So that's one of the biggest uh, challenges that we face. The other that they're seeing in many pilot projects for microtransit is that uh, passengers that use fixed route on a regular basis oftentimes don't have access to cell phones. Uh, they may or may not be able to call into a call center, but obviously that would in, increase the, the cost of a, a microtransit program. Sometimes they don't have the mental facilities to understand a microtransit program, because typically you're told to go wait out a, a corner somewhere, um, and wait for a bus. And, and some of our passengers, and many of our passengers, including those with physical or mental disabilities, could have challenges that, uh, that prevent them from being able to do that. And then you get into things, the city has a, a great investment, this is one of the best cities I've ever seen, for passenger amenities on the street, like bus pa, uh, bus shelters and benches at the stops. You lose that ability in microtransit when you're asking people to go stand in an area that makes more sense from the logistical standpoint of providing public transportation as you do to the fixed route service.
You know, I ask these questions because I'm familiar with the program in Hardin County, and maybe you are too, where they basically have this microtransit, uh, you schedule your bus rides a day or two in advance, and like, and you're not requ, anybody can use it, I believe, in Hardin County. It's not required to have a doctor's pass. Um, I'm just trying to understand, you, you know, why we're doing it the way we're doing it in Beaumont.
Typically, that type of transit you're talking about in Hardin County is typical throughout the United States, especially in Texas and rural areas. Rural transit um, costs significantly more than per passenger or per mile than a fixed route transit. or per mile than a fixed route transit service, sometimes four and five percent because of the distance. That's covered because of the lack of ability to gather large crowds or a large passenger base from an employer, from a hospital or a doctor's area, or from a large place of shopping like Parkdale, Beaumont.
Okay.
Did you have a question for this gentleman?
Yes, I do. So currently you only pick up one patient per?
The, the system we inherited basically is set up, it's a manual system, it's set up in blocks, and it's still only one person every thirty minutes. And I can tell you that it's incredibly inefficient. Yes, ma'am.
So when you get your new data, will you change that procedure?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
When you get the new data, will the procedure change?
Uh, the procedures won't change. The ability to access the system will be much more user-friendly. We'll offer passengers the option of using email to schedule, especially large trips, maybe to the state center or to dialysis centers or nursing homes. So it will be much more passenger-friendly. They'll still be able to call in. The system includes an automated response where the night before, we're telling passengers, we're coming to pick them up and not to forget their trip. Really good for folks in early stages of dementia or folks that may be forgetful. It cuts down on the number of no-shows, which is very expensive. Every time we go to someone's house and they're not ready or they're not there, we incur that cost whether we pick them up or not. So the IVR system, that'll be part of the software, will not only be more efficient for the passengers, but it'll be more cost-effective for those taxpayers.
But again, will you be able to pick up more? Okay, if you have three people calling in to go to dialysis, will you be able to pick all three of them up and take them to the same dialysis location?
If, if they live within a relatively close vicinity and if they're all going at, close to the same time, absolutely. And that's what the system is designed for. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions or comments? There is a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no, the rest ayes. Next item, please.
Mayor Council, item number ten is to consider a resolution that the city council desires to meet with the Board of Trustees of the Beaumont Independent School District on a quarterly basis to discuss items of mutual benefit or concern. For the public, the city council met with the Board of Trustees of the BISD in a special meeting last Tuesday. The request for this resolution to be considered by the city council was made by Councilmember Neal and seconded by Mayor Ames.
Thank you. I think the desire today, mine at least, is to, to just go on the record that this is something that we want to do moving forward after, probably after a new board and a new council is seated, just to keep that dialogue going that was started last week. Is that your intention as well, Councilmember Neal? Okay, would you like to make a motion then?
Move to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Mayor Council, we have an ordinance entitled, an ordinance reinstating charging and collection of fares for services for the Beaumont Municipal Transit System and providing for an effective date. Back in April of last year, soon after the onset of COVID-19, the city council authorized the waiving of transit fares. A proposed date to reinstate the fees is June the first, 2021. It should be noted that wearing masks on transit vehicles will continue to be mandatory until the order is lifted by the Federal Transit Administration. The annual cost to operate the system currently is approximately four point, I'm sorry, five point four million of that amount in a typical year. Approximately almost two point two millions funded by grant from the Federal Transit Administration and a little over five hundred thousand from the Texas Department of Transportation. So approximately four hundred and thirty-five thousand is funded on an annual basis through the charging of fares and the balance is paid from the general fund, which is local taxpayers. The administration recommends approving.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of item number eleven. Is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
City manager, could you, could you tell us, I'm sorry, could you give us an idea of what the balance is paid from, or the amount that the balance is paid from the general fund?
It varies from year to year. It depends on capital expenditures usually. So normally, the city council transfers between two point two and two point seven million dollars to the Municipal Transit Fund on an annual basis to operate the system. So again, the state and the federal government, most years pay roughly fifty percent of the operating cost. Depends on what the capital expenditures are, and those again vary year to year. Sometimes you make capital expenditures towards buildings and facilities. Sometimes it's for the purchase of buses like today. So to answer your question, average is probably two point five million from local taxpayers. And at the fair box, revenue is important. If you didn't have that, you're just gonna pay more from local taxpayers.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please. Oh, I'm sorry, this is our public hearing, isn't it? Do you want to go ahead and read the caption?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, we have an ordinance entitled, an ordinance finding certain structures to be public nuisances and ordering their demolition and removal or repair, providing for severability and providing for a penalty. And Chris Boone will walk those citizens that are here for this purpose through the process.
Good afternoon. In a moment, council is going to be considering in a public hearing the request to order the demolition of the thirty structures outlined in the, in the agenda item. However, they will also hear appeals from owners for additional time and approval for what's known as a work program. We should point out that if council does authorize a work program, that there are certain requirements that must be met. First, that the applicant must be the owner of the property, that all past delinquent taxes be paid, or that a payment plan is arranged with the tax office, that the, that the work program is enrolled in within ten days of today's hearing, and that the work program must be complied with in the following terms, that the first sixty days, the structure needs to be dried in. So all exterior repairs need to be done in terms of foundation, roof, exterior doors, windows, et cetera, and that within ninety days following the, the project needs to be completed with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So again, to clarify, the work program would last no more than one hundred and fifty days. The first sixty days would be a dry-in and then the following ninety days would be complete the project. We do have a copy of these instructions for the work program here in both English and in Spanish that we can provide to you after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now open the public hearing for the dangerous structures. If there anyone is, wishes to speak. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the city clerk. We would appreciate if you would keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium. The red light will come on when your time is up. If you would, and you're speaking on one of these items, if you will let her know, please, which item you're here to speak on so she can let the council know when she calls out your name. So we can find it in our, in our booklet.
Okay. Oscar Sanchez, Jr., 190 Langham Road, Beaumont, Texas, item number four, 315 East Caldwell.
Yes, sir.
I'm here today to ask council for a possibility of an extension. This property was quit claimed to me by my mother, Yolanda Coco, and presently her will is being probated. So it was left to my sis, oldest sister Cynthia Reeves in the will. And so I'm waiting on a judge's decision as to who's gonna get this property. That's why I haven't done anything with the taxes or the property at this time. I have a buyer for the property, but I can't do anything until this probate is finalized.
Okay, can you give us some direction on that since it's in probate?
I have no idea what his, what his timing is with probate. The council, he thought it would be given time.
The probate has been, excuse me, the probate was, has been ongoing for almost three years now. So I would hope that it would be finalized sometime soon.
Okay, so you, I'm trying to find it. Where are our numbers? Did I lose them?
Number four.
Number four.
But the property's also been red-tagged for a year.
Okay, sir, I'm trying to, is the, is the building secure?
I, I have all the windows boarded up so no homeless people can get into the property. And it was this past Sunday, a week ago, that I went to clean the property outside and noticed the notification from the city on it.
And you recognize that there's quite a lot of taxes owed on it?
Ma'am?
Are you, do you recognize that there's, there's taxes owed on it?
Yes, ma'am. I, I understand that. But if I pay the taxes and then a judge's decision is to give it to my sister because it's in the will, which he would possibly do that, then I've paid the taxes for my sister. And I would doubt.
Yeah. Why is that? You know, with the, with the probate already being three years and this being red-tagged and it's in the middle of a neighborhood, that's causing some concern for me anyway, I assume everyone else, but.
Well, could I, is it possible for me to get it like demolished by the city by putting it on? I'm sure there's a waiting list.
If you don't do anything on this, we will order it to be demolished.
But he's asking, if the rightful owner gives their consent, we, we take it down and move off.
At this time, I am the owner. But like I said, the outcome could be, my sister doesn't want the property. So there's a possibility that.
You can, you can. Yeah.
Okay.
Because we don't, we, today we would vote to take it down at no charge to the homeowner. If, if you don't ask for more time. So are we, are we gonna just leave it as is for now? Or are you asking for a hundred and fifty days? Okay, all right. And then Mr. Boone can help you through that process, sir. Okay?
I'm sorry. Isaac Adams, Sr., 305 East Caldwell Drive, Beaumont, Texas, also speaking on item number four, 315 East Caldwell.
Thank you very much. I didn't know Yolanda's son lived here, but anyway, I live next door to the house, 315. I think I talked to Mike Getz about it before. And, you know, then they're vacant three years, bad shape. Grass gives up to your knees, but he did come and cut the grass last week. But I just wanted to see if they could either take it down or fix it up pretty soon.
Okay.
Three years, I figured was long enough.
Yes, sir. Well, you might have heard that he said to leave it as is and that's what we would vote on today.
Yeah, I heard you say that.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Thank you, sir.
Mary Harmon, 450, I think that's Giles, Beaumont, Texas, item number eight, 460 Giles.
I'm the neighbor to the house at 460 Giles Street. I have pictures.
Yes, ma'am, we do too.
I've been calling about this house. The tree came down with the last storm. On the other side, it fell on my property, destroyed all of my garage, tore up all my fence. I've been calling and calling. The grass is too high, nobody's cutting it. Now the rats are on my porch. Captain, my neighbor left her cat. I've been feeding the cat, now the cat is killing the rats. It's a lot with this house and I'm tired. I'm sick and tired of calling about it and nobody's doing nothing. When this tree came down, it's between that house and my house, I had to get all of my kids out the house. I'm a foster parent, grandmother. We had to get out, stand outside in the storm, didn't know where the tree was going, destroyed all of my, everything, from over there to over here. Thank God it didn't hit the house by the grace of God. Okay, now the snakes are coming. My dog's barking, my husband have to pick up a big old snake. What's next? Grass is this high from the other trees that's falling. Something is, definitely has to be done and be done now. I'm tired of calling. The grass right now has been calling and calling. Nobody's cutting it. It's a disaster. It's gotta go.
Yes, ma'am. If, we don't know that anyone's here to speak on this item, but as I said earlier, once the council votes, if they don't ask for more time, which I don't know that we'd give it to them anyway, it will be taken down. Thank you, ma'am.
Linda Moore, 5620 Terrill Park Road, Beaumont, Texas, item number thirteen, 3915 Lydia.
Hi, I am asking for more time. At this point, this was property that was will to me. I finally got it in my name, which was in January. I have established, talking with a contractor to go out. He's giving me a bid. I want to get it repaired. I have someone already that this week gonna go out and take care of the yard area. I've had it boarded up and cleaned out. And I'm in, want the time so I can get it fixed up. I'm gonna either rent it or sell it.
Yes, ma'am. And did you hear the stipulations Mr. Boone gave at the very beginning of the meeting?
I heard that.
And you're okay with the hundred and fifty and having it started right away?
Yes.
Keeping it boarded? And you need to, if the council does approve the hundred and fifty days, you need to go to the second floor and, and enter into a work program?
All right.
Okay? You can do that today if you want to wait.
All right.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need to make things from you?
Any questions, council? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Trudy Downs, 109 PR 8776 Warren, Texas, item number twenty, 3375 Paris.
Good afternoon. I own the house at 3375 Paris. There have been some people in there. My brother had rented the house too. My brother is deceased. And the people that were living in there, I have tried to get them out, but I never could. They ended up going to prison. And the house was to be demolished. But Mr. Bailey here is a neighbor and he wants to buy the house and fix it up. And I would love to see my home, you know, not, not torn down. It means a lot to me.
Yes, ma'am. And so he's going to buy it from you if we approve the time today? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm gonna buy it from her.
Okay. And you heard Mr. Boone at the beginning. Can it all be done within a hundred and fifty days?
A hundred and fifty days?
Yes, sir. If Mr. Boone will repeat it again, please, or ask questions if you have something.
Yes, so the owner would have to enter into the work program. Do you own the property? Not yet. You're buying it?
Not yet, no. We just agreed.
Okay, so if you can secure ownership within ten days, then you could enter into the work program. If you do get approved for the work program today, again, it needs to be dried in, secured windows, doors, roof, foundation within sixty days. And then you have an additional ninety days to complete the whole project.
If I could have some problems, something like hurricane comes through or anything like that, can I give them a time?
Well, so if, if you think that there may be an issue with the timeline, then you just need to think about that carefully because it, it has been the case where people because i- it has been the case where people have invested time and money into a structure and the deadline comes and goes and we have to move forward.
That's what I'm asking you now. Hey, do you extend the time, extend the time?
Not typically, no sir. But we can talk after. Yes.
Extenuating circumstances will work with you.
Yep.
Okay?
But just typical, no.
Well, one of my concerns is I don't think you can even get the property put in his name in ten days.
If you did it, well.
Oh.
So, Ms. Marie Lambert?
That's my mother.
Your mother.
We're gonna take a hundred and fifty days to get that transaction done.
Is she deceased, ma'am?
Yes.
And so, or do you, do you get her home in the will? Is that, and you haven't probated it yet?
Yes.
You haven't or you have?
I, I've probated the wills and my brother, I was giving the house to my brother and he passed away before the uh, will was probated. So all of her belongings and everything went to me. I'm the only other child.
So what happens on that? If it's probated, it should go in her name, right? Yeah.
Well, I have, uh.
Okay, so maybe the, it's in her name, was it in her name because it, it hasn't been changed through probate? Is that possible?
Correct.
Okay, so the main thing is, we need to get it into your name so um, you can sell it, obviously, and I guess you know that. So um, Mr. Boone, you want to help them through this? Do y'all, you still want to try to move forward with the hundred and fifty days? So the council knows how to vote today? Or how, what you're asking for? Not necessarily how to vote, but what you're asking for?
Well, that's the hardest decision to make because until we can get the paperwork right, you know, and if, if uh, we can't get the paperwork right, I, I can't get into something that, and uh, take ownership of something that, that I can't uh, really own.
Ma'am, are you on the same house or did you?
I'm his daughter.
Oh, okay.
I live on the same street. He has three properties on that house already, I mean, on that street already. What he's wanting to do is take that property and fix it. But if, if the title and everything is not clear, then he would not be able to go ahead and say he purchased something because we don't know how long it would give her to change everything over. So I want to make sure everything is clear before he even purchases anything.
Right.
And be responsible.
We understand. Yes ma'am. So basically, he couldn't enter into the work program anyway unless it's in his name, so.
Excuse me.
That's right.
Um, so if that's what you still intend to do, ma'am, then um, then you just need to work as quickly as you can to get that changed over to him, if, if that's what y'all decide to do.
Okay, so what do I do? Just go to the county clerk and?
If you have the probated will, um, you should know that whether you own the property or not.
Well, I have the probated will showing, you know.
That you're the owner? Well, then I guess so.
But it just hasn't never been.
I'm not an attorney.
Men to do.
Hundred and fifty days and if everything is in her name and they can transfer it within the ten days.
Yeah, I was thinking that, so you could actually enter into the work program. And then if you do end up selling it to him, he can take that work program over.
Okay.
Right, Chris?
Then she would just have to make sure the windows are boarded up and things like that.
Yes ma'am.
So what you would have to do is just go ahead and board all the windows up, get all these changed in ten days and I'll make sure he gets back here and do all the proper paperwork.
Well, but she can do the paperwork is what we're saying.
Okay.
And so then all she has to do is transfer it to him if, if, when she gets that done. Is, is that the right way to go with it, you think? Anybody have any?
Yeah.
Cause we have before, went to the county clerk and all we do was we switch over the meeting.
Yes.
And sign off on it.
Exactly.
Certified. I have a copy and he'll have a copy and that's how we normally get everything else.
Well, either one of them can um, can enter into the work program. It just has to be who owns it at that time.
Okay.
And there, just to clarify, the, the time doesn't start over, so if y'all could do that pretty quickly.
Yeah, cause you have ten days to enter into the work program, one of you.
So if she, if she go ahead and enter in today
Mm-hmm.
And she has that done and then it's cleared up, she has everything switched over her name and we go to clerk office and we sign off on it. Time didn't start over, so we go from her time and for the, for the hundred and fifty days.
Yes ma'am.
Correct, that's right.
And then if there's any extenuating circumstances, like the city manager said, those sort of things are taken in, I mean.
Like a hurricane.
Like a hurricane. Yeah.
We're not talking about that.
I don't want to get in something where my hand, it seemed like my hand was tied from the beginning.
I think your daughter gets it.
With these days, limit day of day to start off. And you kind of tied mine hands from the beginning.
Yeah, the hundred and fifty days is, is cut and dry. I mean, that's what it is. But so what, that's why you need to um, go ahead and enter and get it changed over. Either way you go, whether it's you do it or she does it, but it's whoever owns it. So you could do it today, ma'am.
Okay.
And then, okay. Alright.
I have one more question. So let's just say the days are going in his path, okay? The house gets demolished, but he's still able to buy the lot?
From her?
From her?
From the rightful.
Okay.
Yeah, if it gets demolished, she'll still own the lot.
Okay.
Okay?
And where do I go to?
On the second floor after our meeting is over, and this is the last vote we're gonna take today.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, thank you sir. Thank you ma'am.
I have one more question. Do you all consider the weather in Beaumont when you make those, uh, set those uh, days like that, a hundred and fifty days?
Yes, sir, we do. Um, you probably heard the two people that talked, that have the houses next door to them. We have to think of the neighbors as well.
Well, I talked to them, they're, those are my neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
I talked to them and I told them it's a possibility that I might purchase the house if everything was right.
Mm-hmm.
And they, it's okay with them with the time that I have to fix it up. But uh, it does seem to be okay with you all.
Well, it is okay with us, we just have a timeline.
Five, five months. Almost half a year.
Okay.
The house does need work, but it's not.
Yeah, I can count, I know the days, I forget what I'm talking about.
But.
Thank, th- thank y'all very much. We appreciate you coming today.
Uh, Dan, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing her last name, Marbury, I think. Five ninety five Orleans, Suite fourteen hundred, Beaumont, Texas. Item number twenty three seventy eight ninety five San Diego.
What was the name again?
Dan Mayberry, who's in the.
Mayberry?
Is it Mayberry? Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm um, Mayor Ames and Councilperson, I'm here representing JP Morgan Chase Bank. Um, and they are the mortgage or holder of this property. It's not been foreclosed on yet, I don't think, uh, just, just based on my review of the property records this morning. And we just, we just got this. But we'd like to have this property taken off of the list. Because JP Morgan really needs to know what to do with it. Uh, they uh, last, they uh, they hired a company called Mortgage Contracting Services to review the property last week. Last Wednesday, they were out there, they took a bunch of pictures and they're gonna assess that and get a cost of how much it will cost to repair everything. Before they make a decision whether or not they're gonna foreclose on the mortgage and, and then repair the house. And then we'll have a nice property in a nice neighborhood that'll increase attack rolls for the city of Beaumont instead of a flat piece of land. Uh, so our request, your honor, I'm, not your honor, I'm sorry.
We call it that.
Our request is that this property be removed from that list.
For a hundred and fifty days?
I'm sorry?
For a hundred and fifty days? I mean, do you want to join the work program? Is that what you're requesting?
I don't know how this process works. Just remove it off this list for this proclamation number twelve.
Um, we don't typically do that, but we don't typically do that because this, it's come this far, but um.
Becky, I'm sorry, could you move your, I, I, you know, I read lips.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, so we don't typically just take them off the list. We try to put a hundred and fifty days in, but Chris knows, I mean, I'm assuming we have something to work with when it comes to something like this, when it's a foreclosure?
Yeah, the problem we run into is the ten days and when it's a forecl- oh, sorry, sorry. The problem we run into is the ten days and so I know they appre- they approached us, I think, earlier in the week um, because there's a foreclosure decision being made and so um, we, the staff, didn't feel it was appropriate to pull off the agenda. Um, I, I do know that in past hearings that, you know, sometimes we have pulled them off when there was a, an issue of ownership. There's something that, basically a transfer was not gonna happen within ten days and so um, that's uh, that's the request he's making, but again, staff didn't feel it was appropriate for us to pull the item off.
Can I add something?
I have a question too.
This property's been red tagged for eighteen months. Um.
Okay.
I said this property's been red tagged for eighteen months. And I just don't feel that it's appropriate for us to take it off the list because it's JP Morgan and Chase and then we're taking other citizens' houses away.
Well.
But we gotta.
I'm sorry, Mr. Neil, but, but you gotta understand, there's been a moratorium on, on foreclosures. On mortgage foreclosures, so JP Morgan's in the middle here.
It's still not appropriate to allow neighbors to live next to something that looks like this.
Well, I understand. And my client has taken a lot more pictures than that to assess the value. They've spent money uh, to get somebody to determine how much it's gonna cost without any cost to the city to tear it down. And, and you know, to go in there, and I can't guarantee they're gonna do this, but they're in the process of evaluating whether or not they should rebuild the house, improve the value of the property, uh, put it back up as a higher assessed value on the tax roll, tax rolls and then get somebody in there that's gonna pay taxes. I would think that's in the city's best interest.
What if they decide not to?
I beg your pardon?
What if they decide not to?
Mr. Cooper, I don't know, but you be, we'll be right back where we are now. It's just taking a few.
And what would that time period be?
I, I don't know how this process works. If we take it off.
No, I mean, their determination of whether they're gonna go forward with the foreclosure and the improvement.
I don't, I don't know. I don't make, I'm not in that loop, sir. I'm sorry.
So it seems like before that we've gone ahead and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, cause if they do um, renovate the house, they, you know, it doesn't take everyone five, six months usually. So it seems like before we did, given the hundred and fifty days and then if you see that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if you see that it's going to be torn down, they're not gonna renovate it, then we can go ahead and demolish it. Is that the case? Can we do that?
We, we can always, at any step in the process, we can always, from the owner, uh, get it, what's called a demolition consent form signed and we can move forward with demolishing it.
So what if we did that, Mr. Mayberry? What if we did the hundred and fifty days and um, and then if you see that it's going to be torn down, we can immediately, we can demolish it?
Well, Mayor, if I, I, I don't know that he has authority to enter into this, uh, at this time. He's representing the bank and the uh, people that uh, are owners of the house, they.
They would have to enter into the work.
They would have to enter into the work program to take it off the list.
Thank you, Mr. Getz.
I have a question, Mayor. It's showing a market value of forty eight thousand. Do you, what's the mortgage on it?
I don't know that either. I, and I, I know that's the, the JCAD appraised value and I have, I don't know. I just don't know. I would imagine um, Congresswoman Muton that.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Everybody's.
That's a promotion. I get, you get paid for that job too.
And you get retirement and health insurance.
I would imagine in that neighborhood and that property, just based on my limited knowledge of real estate in Beaumont, since I've only lived here since nineteen seventy nine permanently. But uh, it would be a whole lot more than that, once the value of the houses, once the house is fixed up again.
I'm just shocked that there's a mortgage on it and it looks like this.
Well, I understand. And I, I don't have those pictures. The pictures I downloaded on, from the website uh, were black and white, not very legible, but I, but hey, these are just as bad as that, I guarantee you that.
Yes, council.
But that's, I mean, that, that's the request. Let, give Chase Bank an opportunity to evaluate whether or not they want to rebuild it. One thing I can guarantee you, if it's put on the list and it's gonna be demolished in ten days, there's gonna be no investment by Chase Bank.
It won't be demolished in ten days.
Well, I understand that, but if it's on the list to be.
Yeah, there's two more that are down here first, but um, it, but it won't, it won't, but go ahead. Um, council member paid in Samuel, please.
Uh, Dan?
Yeah.
If realizing.
Hey, you can't do that.
Realize, realizing that, I'm sorry, realizing this is kind of a unique request. Uh, number one, that they'd call you and see if you could do this for them. Uh, how long do you think it, it would take if, when you get Chase back on the phone to say, can you make this decision in ten days? Can you make this, can you uh, you know, to ask them to have some timetable? Uh, because if it's something we have to demolish, we don't want to, but if somebody wants to rebuild it, we want to give them, which is why we give you the hundred, uh, ten days plus a hundred and fifty days. Can they give you, do you think after visiting with them, they'd give you some timeframe of a week or two weeks to make that decision?
I can pass that on, Mr. Page.
Put you in a tough spot.
I mean, I, I mean, we're just.
I know you're not psychic, but.
We're, we're just local counsel for Dallas lawyers.
Yeah.
And then, and they're getting limited information from JP Morgan. All I can tell you for sure is JP Morgan has initiated the process, maybe too late, but they, they have spent some money, had a contractor go out there to assess the home and um, that, that's all I can tell you.
Council member Samuel.
Well, with this being, uh, there is a question of ownership, uh, in a sense. Uh, what I've seen over time, um, when there's issues like this, the JP Morgan can file an injunction, uh, at some point uh, if they decide the property is that important to them. Uh, and that wouldn't uh, prevent us from doing what we would normally do in a situation like this. Because you, as a local council, can't say how they're gonna decide. And you can't really uh, make any type of concessions with the city staff to do that. But what I've seen over past times, uh, if the property is that significant and that important, an injunction can be filed with the courts and stop the process.
And then we can.
Mr. Samuel, you're right, and I agree with that, but I mean, it's a practical situation. And as y'all all know, I'm not a real lawyer. I'm a businessman and hard from the beginning, but uh, for a practical situation, who's gonna do that over a forty eight thousand dollar piece of property as it is right now? I mean, um, sometimes you just take your losses and walk away in that situation. And I guarantee you, well, I don't guarantee, I don't know, but it seems to me that if there's an order to demolish the property, they're gonna walk away. Or they're gonna just take what they can after, after the city spends money to, to demolish the property.
Well, I'm just saying that the property's not gonna be demolished to, the, on the eleventh day after this happens. So you have opportunity to talk to the folks in Dallas, find out what they want to do. But we have to make decisions based on, not whether it's JP Morgan Chase or Miss Sally who's heir to the property. I would hate to make a decision for Chase and not make the same decision for Miss Sally who's just trying to uh, do what she can with the property. But Chase has the ability, they have, that's a drop in the bucket for them to order uh,
Yeah, we try to treat everyone the same. Basically, we're, we're trying to treat everyone the same with the rules that we have. Council member Getz, you had something? Are you done?
Mr. Mayberry, I want to concur with council member Samuel and say that that is probably the best route to go here because we would typically not fight your client's request to enter into a TRO and an injunction, a temporary injunction. So you're not looking at something that would be extremely cross prohibi- prohibitive uh, for your client to do.
So you're not looking at something that would be extremely cross prohibi- prohibitive for your client to do. If your client makes the determination that this property is worth saving and we've already entered into the process to declare it to be demolished, that would be the best way to go. It wouldn't be cost prohibitive for your client. And it, it could, I mean, this is all a business decision for your client, of course, to make.
And that would be even included in the foreclosure. Possibly.
Alright.
So, I think what I'm hearing is that if we go with the hundred and fifty days, then you can bring that back to them. That if the council votes to, no, to do what then? Nothing? Do nothing?
He can't get into an agreement to stop it.
So. So we just leave it as is then?
Right.
Okay. I understand now. I'm not a lawyer either, sir.
Oh, he really is, but uh.
I know, I know that he is. I've known Dan for a long time. Okay. Yeah, so we'll, we're going to, we're going to treat it like we would any other property and if you just bring that back to them and then they can decide how they want to move forward.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Joe Gilery, eighteen ninety Laurel, Beaumont, Texas. Item number twenty-five, twenty-two, forty-five Somerset.
Hello. My name is Joe Gilery. I'm representing the Beaumont Housing Authority. We're asking for a hundred and fifty days extension. Initially, the house was going to be sold, but HUD didn't give us permission to sell it. We recently sold a hundred and ten houses. The houses, the house has no taxes. It's dried in, it's secured. Some neighborhood kids went in and started some fires. Didn't do any damage. Nothing caught on, nothing burned except whatever they set on fire, but it did heavy smoke damage. We tried to get the smell out, we couldn't. We did strip the inside of it, all the sheet rock. The lawn has been maintained. We got a contract on it. And I did get three bids to get the work done, since we can't sell it. And I just need permission to get the extension, to move forward with getting the work done.
And y'all own it? I mean, you.
Yes, Beaumont Housing Authority.
Any questions, Counsel?
I have a question. Why are you unable to sell it?
HUD has to give us permission to sell it. We have to do an application with the HUD office in Chicago. And I did an application for a hundred and twenty homes. They approved a hundred and ten. And we sold a hundred and ten. Unfortunately, there was one of them they didn't approve. And it had more to do with the location. They approved the homes that were in, what they consider impacted neighborhoods.
Okay.
Thank you.
So your, y'all's intention is to refurb it and then sell it, then you can, or what are you going to do?
No, we can't sell it at this point. So we're going to refurbish it and put it out for rent.
Oh.
Back on the program.
Alright. Understand. Anything, Counsel?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Gilbert Garza, one fifty Sparrow Way, Beaumont, Texas. Item number twenty-six, one sixty Sparrow Way.
Thank you for letting me appear before the council. I'm just the neighbor of the property in question. I just want to know that the pictures you probably have in front of you do not show the interior of the house. It's, it's heavily, there's a lot of mold inside that house. It is prevalent throughout the house. The roof was damaged and it had a lot of rainwater before whoever owns it. I don't know if it's the mortgage company or the lady that lived there. She left before anything could be done to the house. She let it go for many, many years because she financially could not fix the house, make any repairs whatsoever. The. There have been, I have seen varmints, some opossums and some rats in the house, coming out from the house. And it's, I would just like to urge the council to go ahead and take the house down. I did, like I said, I don't know the question of ownership. I do know that she, when the prior, the lady that was living there to own the house said it, one of the reasons she left because to repair it would cost more than it's worth and she did not have any money. I mean, she's just a widow woman and doing the best she could. The neighbor on the, I'm on the south side, I would cut her grass in the front. The neighbor on the north side cut her grass in the back. And we did what we could for her, but there were a long length of time when nothing was done to the house in regards to repair.
Yes, sir. If no action is taken on it today, it will be taken down. So, and we haven't heard from anyone at this point, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Javier Alejandro, fifty West Master Drive, number one, Key Biscayne, Florida. Item number twenty-nine, forty-four, fifty-one Woodlawn.
Hello, everybody?
Yes, sir.
I'm a spokesperson for Singing Properties out of Florida. All we're doing is asking for some more time. We've already started the rehab process of this property. On the interior and the exterior. I believe that one of the city inspectors wanted us to get the electricity and the plumbing inspected in order for us to be able to sell the property. So.
Do you have anything on this, Chris?
Well, just that it, it appears to have been in a work program. The work program was signed up for in February of twenty twenty. It expired in July of twenty twenty. Permits were pulled and subfloors were installed. Windows have been replaced, but window sills are still rotten. Were not replaced there, and then you can tell from the photographs, including the staff report, there are still holes in the sheet rock need to be replaced. Siding is rotten in places. Electrical will need to be replaced again. It has to come up to code once it's red tagged. And again, you can see in the photographs.
Now, I do believe that Singing Properties didn't buy this property, uh, didn't buy this property until after February of twenty twenty. I believe it was maybe October or November. And since then, you know, we have done quite a bit of work to that property.
So you're asking for the hundred and fifty days?
To start over.
To start over on the work program as a new owner?
As a new owner, correct.
So again, they had gone into a pre-council work program and this would be a council work program, which typically if offered by council, the clock would start over.
This is the first time it's been to council?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you do think you can have it finished within the hundred and fifty days, sir?
Oh, sure. Yeah, definitely.
With everything that needs to be done?
Right, well, at this point, a lot of the stuff has been done. A lot of those windows have been replaced. There's been a lot of structural done to it, roofing. So, a lot of it has already been done. If city inspectors would like to go out there, take new pictures of the property, would be more than welcome to, to walk them through it.
Okay. So you'll enter, you, you can, you have the authority to go ahead and enter into a work program?
I, I don't, but I can have our head office out there in Florida enter into that process.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, if there's no other citizen that wishes to speak in this public hearing, I will close the floor. And I believe, I believe we have four before us that are asking for the work program per all the discussions. Is that what somebody has that would like to make a motion?
I have five, Mayor.
I have thirteen, twenty, twenty-five and twenty-nine.
I have twenty-three.
That was the JP Morgan one. I thought we were going to just leave it. I had thirteen, twenty, twenty-five and twenty-nine. Number eight, we're going to leave. Thirteen, twenty, twenty-five and twenty-nine. Twenty, twenty-three was the JP Morgan. We were going to leave it on him.
Twenty-six is not, they want it to.
Twenty-six was leave also. That was the one. He, he, he wants us to tear it down. He's the neighbor.
Okay.
Thirteen was Lydia, one hundred and fifty days. Twenty.
Can we ask Mr. Mayberry one more time if he wants to join into the hundred and fifty days?
But he can't.
Or if he wants to try to get his client to do it in the next ten?
You can ask him whatever you'd like.
Mayor, he could, you could authorize, and if the ten days expires, he would be in the same boat. In other words, the order would move forward and so. Staff would start the process of demolition, but it was discussed about a injunction. So he would still have the opportunity to seek the injunction. We'll just give him an extra ten days.
Okay, so we want to ask him that question? Is that what, is that what y'all like? Okay, Mr. Mayberry, can you come forward, please? We just have an idea for you. Chris, you want to?
So it was discussed by council about the possibility of you or your client seeking an injunction or a temporary restraining order to prohibit the city from moving forward with the demolition. And again, as the mayor mentioned, we don't do that on the eleventh day. It'll take a little time. But what was discussed here is that we could go ahead and council may authorize the work program, which would give you ten days to see if you could, your client could enter into a work program or come up with some kind of decision. If not, that would expire and we would start the process at that point of beginning demolition. Again, it's not immediate.
It could be thirty days for, you don't know.
Correct. It usually takes a minimum of thirty days, but that would give your client the ability, if they wanted to seek the injunction, they could do that.
Any accommodation would be very, very appreciated.
So what will happen is, is we'll put it on the hundred and fifty days and you'll have ten to try to get with Chris. If, if y'all have made a decision, but otherwise, it'll just move back.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So we do want to put twenty-three on there.
So thirteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five and twenty-nine.
That's correct.
Are you done with me, Becky?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
You ready for a motion, Mayor?
Yes.
I'll move to approve this list, but offering the work program to thirteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five and twenty-nine.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
A second.
And for those that are still in the audience, council did, with this motion, if it's approved, thirty-nine, fifteen Lydia, thirty-three, seventy-five Paris, seventy-eight, ninety-five San Diego, twenty-two, forty-five Somerset and forty-four, fifty-one Woodlawn will be entered into the work program if this motion passes. The rest of them will go for demolition. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. That concludes our business items for today. And I will now move on to public comment. Now would be the time, and if you are still here and you want to enter into the work program, they can go up today, right, Chris? To the second floor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on any item, if you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear, hand it to the city clerk at the front. She will call out your name. As I mentioned earlier, we would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Ralph Mazillo, thirteen forty Elkins Lake, Huntsville, Texas.
He left. Mr. Mazillo?
He left.
Okay.
Community activist Ricky Jason, ten seventy-five Magnolia Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, sir.
Greetings, board. First of all, I thank and I praise God that we all have made it here safe today and I pray to God that your return and my return will be equally safe. Right now, we going through a crisis right now. And I like to help the city of Beaumont as well as southeast Texas with the gun violence, with the disabled people and with the homeless. And people just don't have anything. I started out, I was blind. And Dr. Richard Levisy was able to pay for me to be able to see and the legendary Bob Hope. I thank him because I'm blessed to be here today. At the age of fourteen, I was getting in a lot of trouble, being in gangs and doing everything. Started a breakdance group. I met this man and he told me, that's not the route. There's a better way. He picked me in the dance group up, sat us down, talked to us. And we were able to be able to dance with New Kids on the Block, New Edition. And because of the breakdancing of the electric lows, it's going to be in the Olympics. And I'm here today to say, thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Mr. W. L. Pate. Because if it wouldn't be for you, I think I'd be in TDC, I'd be in prison, or I'd be dead. And till this day, Mr. Pate, he's always have been here for me. He never looked at me as a color. And his mother and father, we used to sit and eat at the same table with them. His brother Robert Pate used to do all the filming of the dance group. Back then, they would buy our tennis shoes and help us. And we need more people like that. And I'm willing to work with you, Mr. W. Pate. With this gun violence here, we're number two in the state of Texas with all this lynching. I'd like to thank you as well for sponsoring me and your father, Tom Neal, for the execution of John William King for my hotel expense. Y'all sponsors and I thank y'all so much. And y'all got a diamond right here. This man is a legend. He loves people of all colors. And if he feel you got something in you, no matter what color he is, he will help you. He'll make a beautiful, beautiful leader for us. We need W. L. Pate. Whoever watching and listening, he don't just talk the talk, he's real. Bubba Smith's father, Coach Willie Ray Smith, he introduced me to them. And I want y'all to know, a lot of people don't know this self, for Bubba Smith's mother, W. L. Pate did the eulogy. Mr. Pate is one of the finest persons on the planet. I hire him, I hold him up here with Dick Gregory and Dr. Levisy. So, Mr. Pate, thank you so much and thank you, Ms. Becky Ames, for y'all time. I love you, Dr. Pate. Love you, Mr. Pate, so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jason.
Terry Roy, ninety-one, fifty Shepherd, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, everybody.
Yes, sir.
As you know, I've been here a few times. And with my sewer, with my, not been able to flush my toilet, which lasted twelve years, which is, you know, unacceptable to me. Don't get me wrong, I, I love where I live, even though I was asked by my councilman, if I'm not happy, I need to leave. And I found that unacceptable. I'm a constituent of Ward Two. And I don't appreciate being asked to leave. And now I'm dealing with a sewer pipe that runs underneath my street. That holds about seven inches of water. So I'm, I'm, they said it was an acceptable amount of water, which is not. If I accept that, that means I accept the fact that I want West Now to come out and, when I have my grandkids at my home, to, to infect them with that. And I'm not okay with that. I'm not okay that me and my wife can't sit outside because it may happen to us. You know, I, I'm tired of accepting things. Because it seem like every time I come here, it's an accepting thing. And I'm, like I said, I'm always mad when nobody's behind me when I'm up here, coming to speak the same way I am. And I don't know if y'all tired of all of that, but I am. And I'm not going to accept that from this council or the next council. And if we can't get that fixed, then something, something's wrong with us. And that's all I have to say about that part. But Mayor, I want you to know I appreciate all your years of service. I mean, you, you can only do as much as you can. And when you have a good team behind you, you become a good mayor. What people don't realize is when they criticize you, they criticizing theyself because it's a team. And if you don't have a team up here, the city's going to falter, which is what's happening now. And if you don't have a team up here, the city's gonna falter, which is what's happening now. And like I say, I don't appreciate being asked to leave where I live, because I pay taxes there. Maybe the person that told me to leave needs to leave. And that's just the bottom line. I'm not gonna sit here and take what's been given to me. I'm not that guy. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Alto Watson, 2615 Gladys, Beaumont, Texas.
The school board used to do this, they would make you, make you sit through the meeting and come up here. I have a unique problem that I can't get an answer for, and hopefully, maybe somebody will return my email. The other day, I'm leaving the Beaumont Country Club, where I got to play golf with an old friend of mine. And I go through Collier Park, I parked in the rear, and they're taking the Collier Park sign down. Great big, beautiful, green Collier Park sign. And I didn't know, I pulled over and I said, what are y'all doing? And he said, well, we're replacing the sign. And I asked, what are you gonna do with it? And he said, we're gonna throw it away. Well, that got me to thinking. I mean, I, I was born here. A lot of the people here are not born here, okay? I mean, Mr. Getz is a born and proud author. I believe Mr. Hayes is a born and proud author. Harden Jefferson with the mayor. You know, I live here, and I'm gonna probably die here. And I'm tired of watching city of Beaumont stuff getting thrown away. You have all these houses here that are gonna get condemned. I mean, how many hundreds of beautiful homes in this town were torn to the ground? Just because they weren't kept up. Beaumont's idea of civic restoration is to tear down a beautiful old cast iron building, like the Cobb, you know, like the Cobb building, and put up a sign that says a beautiful old building used to stand here. And all you're left with is a parking lot. So, I figured if you're gonna throw it away, I said, give it to me. I'll take it, I love it. I'd, you know, I'd like to put it up in my house. So I said, well, it's city property, we can't give it to you. I got that. So I want to buy it. That thing costs 18, $1900, I find out. And now I understand that the city manager and the city attorney, who do not like me at all, have decided they're going to destroy the sign rather than sell it. I'd be happy to try to buy it if it's some reasonable price. The city of Beaumont thinks it's worthless. I don't think that city of Beaumont's signs are worthless, or city of Beaumont memorabilia is worthless. I'm proud of this city. I live here. And so I want to, I want to keep the sign. It's a great, big, beautiful sign. If there's a bidding process, let me know what it is. I can't get a response from the city manager. I cannot get a response from the city attorney. I have emailed them both. If it has value, let's sell it. Let's make some money on it. For example, you know, use it, give it to me. I can't get my water bill reduced from February because I repaired my pipe myself. I don't have a plumbing bill to give, to get a reduction on my water. So, I'd like to buy the sign. With someone, please call me, and I'll take it from you.
Thank you. I do think I saw an email from you to Mr. Watson.
I don't really know Mr. Watson. I say hello to him when I see him, so, anyway.
I thought I saw an email.
I've copied the full council on this many times. I did respond to Mr. Watson.
Mr. Watson, we're not, we're not gonna have a...
But, so the council knows that I responded. To him, to all of you, you have it. And I'm sorry, Mr. Getz didn't forward that to you.
Yeah, I got, I got, I got a copy of the email to Mr. Watson.
Could you give him an answer? And y'all know, we have a city policy and a city ordinance that governs surplus property. We handle it appropriate, like appropriately, like we treat everyone the same. And y'all have that answer in an email.
Okay, any other citizen?
Yes, ma'am. Christopher Matthews, 80, I'm sorry, 3875 North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council. I just wanted to come and speak. This is a little bit different than what I would normally say. There's a lot of criticism going around. The election's gonna be Saturday. There's a lot of criticism, especially for all of you that are up here, because of your position. But I just want to come and just tell all of you guys, thank you for your service. We'll see what happens Saturday, but thank you all for your service. It's not easy to do. It's not easy to be on your platform, in a spotlight of Beaumont, so to speak. And do what you do, and have to deal with some of the comments and criticism and stuff. So I just want to honor all you guys, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. That's all I have, mayor.
Can you come back next week?
Election'll be over.
Come back every week.
Okay, council member comments, I'll start with you. Councilmember Neal? Councilmember Getz?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Allen.
Oh. Oh, there was another, okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Allen. Go ahead, ma'am.
To the mayor, council, attorney, city manager. My name is Addie Allen. I'm standing here, one reason is, my name didn't get called when we were talking about the demolition. Number 21 on the list has been a concern of mine for a while. And I complained about it, and I was told by staff that they couldn't find the heirs. So it's just really ironic that last week, I went to Jefferson County and found out that the city of Beaumont owns that structure. Now, if I'm wrong, then I have a warranted deed in my hand that says it was bought in 1979. It has been red tagged, the roof has been blue roofed through multiple storms. And I want to know if the city is gonna go into a work program. You know, that's really not funny. But bottom line is, will that be torn down in 10 days? And I have this as proof. And if this is wrong, it came from Jefferson County. If you want me to give this to the city secretary.
Can you give it to Mr. Ben?
In 1979, the city bought this from the heirs. And it's still listed on the roll as, and he'll see the name. So I won't call the names, Mayor Ames. But I'd like to see this done. Now, you were so gracious with me. So I would ask that you be gracious with the neighborhood, so that it can look as good as my grass is being cut. So I appreciate your service. We'll see who wins. And I hope that this council will not leave without making some concessions for flooding, because I think I heard one of our officials say, in one of the last big water floods, that the city would move forward. And so far, I don't know. I, I will see when we get the next big green. But I've been looking at the agenda, trying to figure out what's going on. So thank you so much for listening to me, and thank you for your service.
Okay, 21 will be demolished. We did not rule on that today, Ms. Allen. 21 will be demolished. We did not rule to give it any, and we don't, we don't put it in a work program. I mean, the 10 days is for a work program. So it will be demolished.
But I hope that document is corrected and the city will pay attention to what you own.
Well, I don't know about that, but we'll look at it. Thank you. I've not heard that before. Okay, I'll go back.
Change your minute.
No comment.
Councilmember Getz?
Early voting continues today until 7 o'clock this evening. And if you have not voted, you can vote today. And you have election day from 7 to 7 this Saturday. So please exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Mayor Protim?
Just to reinforce what Councilman Getz said, no comment.
Okay, councilmember Pate?
No comment. What am I gonna say? You already said it.
Councilmember Samuel?
You did write the date down, didn't you?
Councilmember Samuel, have anything?
I said no.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Muton?
Thank you, mayor. I would like to send condolences to the family of Raymond Mayfield. And also condolences to 93-year-old Ms. Marie Wiltz. Her daughter was my, my daughter's kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Linda Gilmore. And for many, many years, she volunteered wherever her daughter taught and went to school with her daughter every day and volunteered in those kids' classroom. My daughter's 27 years old now, and she still remembers her just being such a wonderful volunteer. So, to Mrs. Linda Gilmore and the family of Mrs. Marie Wiltz, I would just like to truly, truly send my condolences. Also, do not forget about Sunday, May 2nd, Lemonade Day. It's so much fun to go out to all of the different lemonade stands. And you would think it's just a little square booth painted lemon yellow. It is not. They've gotten real, real creative with the lemonade stands. I think it needs to be a contest just on judging all of the different designs that you could have on the lemonade stand. So get out and support our future entrepreneurs. It's a, it's a great thing to go out and do, Sunday, all day. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Do you have anything? Do you have anything? Okay, just a reminder, I did mention at the beginning of the meeting that next week will be an evening meeting. Is it 6 o'clock? Is that what we said? 6:00 PM this Tuesday. We will not have a meeting at 1:30 this Tuesday, May 4th. This will be our second evening meeting for the ones that we're doing every quarter. And it will start at 6 o'clock in here. So if you'd like to come, don't come at 1:30. Okay, that's all I have. And thank y'all for coming. We are now adjourned.